We are going to call to order this staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, September 24, 2019. We have a number of really important items on the agenda. The first of which is an update related to the Millennium Hotel. Jeff, I assume you're going to kick this one off?
I would be happy to. So, as the... Just wanted to provide the board today with an update on where we are with the Headquarters Hotel Discussion. This obviously is a subject that has been high on the board's priority list over the past... Well, I'd say over the past two years formally, but really going back even before that, decades in terms of the importance of the Headquarters Hotel question to the county and the broader convention and visitor industry. Just a bit of background first, though, in terms of... For someone who may be watching at home, who is wondering why at the county business meeting, we're talking about a hotel. Having a viable convention Headquarters Hotel is an absolute must for a community's convention and visitor industry. And obviously, as the board knows, the county is very integrated with the operation of our local Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Duke Energy Convention Center, the Sharonville Convention Center. It's a big part of what counties do from a development... From an economic and economic development and community development perspective. A Headquarters Hotel... A true Headquarters Hotel is a key linchpin in that industry and infrastructure. So, on a higher level, just when you think from an economic development perspective, the convention and tourism industry supports roughly 10% of the local economy. One out of every 10 jobs is generated in the convention or tourism industry. And that spending that is brought by out-of-town individuals when they come in, either through tourism or through conventions, supports the local tax base, which also then goes to drive down the tax base required from permanent residents and enables the development of public infrastructure, et cetera, on the backs of folks who are coming in to enjoy this community from an outside perspective. The Millennium Hotel is an 800 hotel... An 800 key hotel right in the vicinity of the Duke Energy Convention Center, which, while it has 800 rooms, has historically, especially over the past several decade or more, lacked the true size from a meeting space perspective, room size, to really serve as a true Headquarters Hotel that allows the Convention and Visitors Bureau to book the large blocks of rooms needed in today's convention and visitor world to maintain a top-flight CVB and Duke Energy... Or in Convention Center. So, just a couple of stats for you, just to kind of emphasize this. In 2015 and 2016, the Millennium Hotel accounted for 23% and 27% of the total group room nights booked. That's what you would expect from a hotel that's providing kind of a linchpin service for a local CVB. In 2019, that number is closer to 1% than the 23% to 27%. Those room nights have fallen roughly 60,000 over the past several years. So, we've seen a decline in the ability of the Millennium to really service the local community truly as a Headquarters Hotel. As the board is aware, in recent years, there has been... There's been many efforts to attempt to engage the Millennium Hotel in a conversation around either the public acquiring that hotel or otherwise doing the things to put it in the position to serve as that true Headquarters Hotel. And I do want to state, in deference to our friends at the Millennium Hotel, that... And I know the commissioners that have been a part of this conversation can attest to, we've had some fantastic conversations with the representatives from the Millennium, from the corporate level on down. I think there's been some fantastic people that are there throughout the organization that I think truly their intentions and hearts are in the right places to what the role they want to play in the community. We've just never been able to reach an agreement with them on how to leverage that asset for the betterment of this community, unfortunately. So, those conversations have largely been unsuccessful. Earlier this year, we learned that Vanderkar Holdings had entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the Millennium Hotel for $36 million. Again, that was a fairly historic occasion in that, to our knowledge, it's really the first time a developer has gotten that far. We've heard that there have been letters of intent, things of that nature, but never to the point where it was consummated through a purchase and sale agreement. Of particular note, that purchase and sale agreement acquired by Vanderkar allows the developer to assign the contract to a public entity to facilitate the acquisition and the subsequent development of a true publicly-owned Headquarters Hotel. The acquisition, demolition, and development of the hotel would be financed under Vanderkar's proposal with nonrecourse hotel revenue bonds. So, the debt service on the bonds would be paid through hotel revenues. So, around that time, Vanderkar had also approached the county with the concept of assigning that to some public entity. The county obviously works closely with the Community Improvement Corporation, with the Port Authority, with the CFA, and the contract really allowed... The purchase-sale agreement really allowed for the assignment to any of those entities. So, around that time, the county engaged with its legal and financial consultants to start doing some true, high-level due diligence on the project to see if this made sense, focused primarily on variables such as the project's financial assumptions, underwriting considerations, the legal ability for the project to be eligible for tax-exempt debt financing, et cetera. I think our general thoughts at that time was this was a fantastic opportunity, but it's also an opportunity that ultimately could cost as much as a quarter of a billion dollars. So, we wanted to be sure that we started this off by performing the type of due diligence that was needed to put the project on the right foot. Without going into extraordinary depth on it, the due diligence, both legal and financial, concluded that the project approach was feasible, but there was still a lot more due diligence to do. And I want to emphasize that, a lot more due diligence to do. So, we had spoken with representatives from the Millennium Hotel, who informed us that presuming the community continued to move forward with the project in a supportive fashion, that they would be flexible on things like deadline dates throughout the contract, throughout the purchase-sale agreement, et cetera. So, at that point, the... I jointly signed a letter with City Manager Dehaney, where we had directed Port Authority Director Laura Brunner to pick up the due diligence on behalf of the county. We have turned all of that due diligence... Any due diligence material that was provided to us, we had provided to the port. And at that point, asked her to continue the conversation forward with attempting to move this project forward, both from a due diligence perspective as well as with discussions with Vanderkar. I can say that Vanderkar and the port are currently in discussions over how to best assign that agreement over to the Port Authority to ensure that the... As was Vanderkar's assumption from the beginning, that the contract... That the purchase-sale agreement would be put into public hands. So, those contract... Those assignment discussions are ongoing. Unfortunately, the project does face a... What is, I believe, the term, a due diligence deadline as of this Friday, which requires the payment of earnest dollars to the Millennium, the amount of $1.3 million. So, we have received a couple of timing extensions from the Millennium Hotel. They indicated to us that they would be flexible as long as we kept moving things forward. We'd received two two-week extensions. As of yesterday, we understand that they are not willing to extend the current due diligence extension past Friday. So, the question that has arisen is whether or not... Is how to facilitate keeping the purchase-sale agreement as a viable opportunity for the community, and how to, maybe more specifically, keep the opportunity for public control on the table, given the long history of this. One opportunity that has been suggested is the use of transient occupancy tax dollars to allow for that opportunity. That would obviously be a county ask. The county is the primary holder of transient occupancy tax dollars in the community, at least from a broad convention and visitor perspective. So, the question is whether or not the county would be willing to consider the utilization of those resources in that way to essentially purchase what I would call an option on the ability to close on this property and to facilitate the potential advancement of a... The acquisition or the acquisition and development of new Headquarters Hotel. So, a lot has occurred on this over the past several months and even several weeks. So, we've been working very closely with our friends at the Port Authority, with Vanderkar, the developer, with the CVB, with the CFA. In addition, with our friends at the city, I do want to thank... See, Phil Denny and Luke Blocher are here somewhere, I think, in the back. And I really do want to thank them, City Manager Dehaney, and all the folks over at the City of Cincinnati. I think over the past several months, we've worked very cooperatively with the city in trying to move this project forward, or at least get on the same page in terms of how we wanted to advance this, recognizing that some of these other entities, be it the CVB, the Port Authority, et cetera, looking to both the city and the county collectively for direction on this. And I want to thank the city for being a good partner on this. So, with that, commissioners, I don't come to you today with a recommendation. We have some other information that we're currently gathering. We're doing some work as we speak on the matter, but I wanted to provide the opportunity for some public discussion on this and answer any questions I can, or get back to you quickly if there... If I can get you those answers. Again, to be clear, the due diligence deadline expires on Friday. I believe the contract specifically states that the delivery of dollars on that... There's actually a delay in the deadline on that. So, the earnest dollars are not due technically until next week, but I think it's obviously a discussion we needed to start now. So, if there's any questions, be happy to entertain them.
Thank you. Thank you for the overview. I just want to add a couple of things. So, we did have public hearings related to some of the big capital projects that are anticipated in this community over the next number of years. They happened relatively shortly after I got here. And so, what we learned was that the public is very concerned about the Millennium Hotel and its impact on the expansion of the Convention Center, and that there's no reason to do an expansion of the Convention Center until we have something happening with the Millennium Hotel. And then the arena plays into that conversation as well. But it was very clear that the Millennium Hotel rose to the top of the stack as to what the county's priorities should be related to the TOT dollars. And I do want to point out that these are separate funds from the general revenue funds that we have. These are specific dollars from the hotel motel tax that are to be used for a purpose related to Convention Center business and hotel-related business. So...
Madam President, if I could just add on to that, because I think you stated very clearly what I think is a prevailing school of thought with the convention and visitor industry, that the Headquarters Hotel is a preeminent importance in the local industry. There are also those who equally value the opportunity to expand the Convention Center. And I just wanted to note, to your point, that I think regardless of where you are on that continuum, I think most would say that the occupancy tax produced by a fully functioning, vibrant Headquarters Hotel is an integral component to expanding the Duke Energy Center. So, regardless of which camp you're in, the establishment of a Headquarters Hotel is an important component of that.
Right, and the room nights, obviously, that would be necessary if we were to expand the Convention Center. Guaranteed room nights are a part of that equation as well. And so, the... What was... Has been in front of us is an option that doesn't require any taxpayer dollars or TOT dollars, because it's financed through revenue bonds. And so, the revenue of the hotel pays for the debt service that is incurred. And so, this... You know, when you look at that from, I think, our perspective, it seems like a pretty good option. And so, we have been doing due diligence, and I know there's a long history with this particular owner out of Singapore. And we have tried many times, as have others, to get some control over the hotel so that we can advance that property and the Headquarters Hotel. And there has not been any success to this point in doing that. And I'm not ready to declare success, by the way. But we are further along than we have been in years past. And so, as we look at this then, you know, we've done some due diligence ourselves. We are now turning over control of the project to the Port Authority, which I think is appropriate. They are the ones that do a lot of the economic development for both the city and the county. And so, the city has been in lockstep with us and moving in that direction. And so, that's a recent occurrence, but then we have this deadline. And so, we had gone to the chairman in Singapore, and I... The understanding was if there was forward progress, then we could maybe anticipate an extension of that deadline, but at this moment in time, that is not happening. And so, even though I think we would view this as forward progress, others do not. And so, we have a decision to make, as the Board of County Commissioners, as to whether or not we are going to put up the earnest money of $1.3 million and make that decision before the end of the week or not. And remembering that the TOT dollars... There are two waterfalls, one city, one's county, but the city has obligated their dollars to FC Cincinnati over the long term. And so, the only dollars remaining are the county dollars. And so, it is incumbent upon this board to make this decision. So, that's the question in front of us. I, you know, I'm struggling with this, because the beauty of the deal to begin with was that there were no tax dollars in. So, this earnest payment obviously is money in for a specific purpose, though, so that we can get the time required to do the due diligence through the Port Authority to figure out whether or not this deal makes financial sense for the county and taxpayers and the expansion of the Convention Center or Hotel... And the hotel and all the rest of it. So, I do want to emphasize this deadline, because, you know, I want to hear where everybody is on this, but I do think it's a difficult decision. If we don't do it, then the understanding is the deal stops, and that's the end of it, and we don't make progress on this property or on the Millennium. If we do it, and we move forward, and we actually have the deal done, well, then it's been a very good investment on behalf of the county. So, that's the quandary, I think, in front of us. So, I want to hear from the other commissioners as to your thoughts related to this, and then I will follow up with, you know, how to move forward.
Madam President, I also met with Jeff yesterday to get some clarification on this issue. But it's not an unrealistic request for us to ask for 60 additional days for due diligence. To me, it's imperative when you're talking about $1.3 million. So, the fact that they have refused to allow that is almost a no-brainer for me as it relates to whether or not we want to move forward with allocating this amount of money. And if you believe everything that you hear in the newspaper, which I definitely do not, the Duke Energy expansion is already part of this plan. And I don't know how this happened, or how this is proposed to be happening without us knowing about it. But to answer your question as it relates to the due diligence, I think it's absolutely necessary that we be given an opportunity to make sure that the port can see what our viability is as it relates to our ability to have revenue in that area. So, that's where I am with it right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Portin.
Madam President, thank you. You referenced public hearings. Those were, you're right, convened very early on in your tenure here. I had asked that we establish a hearing, and it took place at the Board of Elections, on all of our big-box project opportunities, and to try to, within two years, if not during this term, to have some plan outlined on how we were going to be able to address all of these issues, if not have them under contract, and we were actually moving ahead. In my mind, I'm one of the individuals who's in the camp of the fact that the Convention Center cannot be expanded unless we know we have a world-class, first-class, state-of-the-art Headquarters Hotel that is going to be built. At the same time, I do not put myself in the camp of saying, "Well, we have to do... Make sure that one is completed before the other." In fact, I think we have a great opportunity and should take advantage of it, if we can, on moving forward positively on both developing a world-class, state-of-the-art, five-star brand hotel as the Headquarters Hotel, inextricably linked to Convention Center expansion, so that we are able to do both, or begin to move forward with both at the same time. And I think we can do that. I know that the issue of the jobs and development that will be sparked by that kind of excitement and activity within our Convention and Visitors Bureau and the work that's done there, and in the larger sense, the national market of the business that we would be competing for against peer cities like St. Louis, Indianapolis, Cleveland, and others, is going to put us in a tremendous position over the next 10-plus years relative to convention business, tourism, travel, the increase and growth of our transient occupancy tax dollars, and so on. Let me say one thing about the TOT, the transient occupancy tax dollars. During the height of the recession, in fact, during the recession, start to finish, the TOT was the only county source of revenue that grew unabated during that time period. We were able to weather the recession better than other peer communities because of what we had done relative to the TOT and the expansion of our convention facilities than others in being able to rely upon the new business that they produced. In 2002, when it looked like Convention Center expansion was going to be put on the rocks, I actually led, here at the county, the development of the financing plan, working with state leaders and local leaders, and those civic and business leaders in the convention and tourism industry. And we developed a plan that generated new money and was supported by the city and supported by the elected leadership of our suburban communities, especially those in the northern part of Hamilton County, where the main hotels are located that are competing for tourism business with Warren County and Butler County and Claremont County in particular, and supported by our state legislative officials, Bill Seitz being principal among them. But we developed a financing plan that generated the expansion of the Duke Center, the expansion of the Sharonville Convention Center. It created a new Convention and Visitors Bureau serving the northern communities exclusively because the attention given to them had drifted at the CVB. And as a consequence, our jobs created in the service industry, in manufacturing and supply industries that supported the service industry, hotel industry, and so on, grew and increased. And it has been one of the best things that we did in the early part of the first decade of this new millennium from a growth standpoint here in Hamilton County, and we continue to realize those benefits to this day. Madam President, you referenced the FC issue, where we did not stand in the way of the city accessing those dollars and using those dollars in connection with FC Cincinnati, among other things. And so, you know, at the end of the day, where I'm heading with this is I believe that this is a tremendous opportunity that we cannot let go by. Now, Jeff, I asked you some questions when we met, and I don't know if you have some additional facts to share relative to dollars, estimated dollars and the like, from the standpoint of the development of a hotel, what it would generate, and let's say, for example, we built an 800... Or the developer built, the port built... I use the word "we" too often sometimes. I don't mean to confuse people with that. But the port builds an 800-room hotel, develops that, but our average room nights at the beginning continue to be 75% of a 600-room hotel. And what does that do for us revenue-wise relative to if we were to invest TOT money into the down payment so that we get the extension? Because I believe what the chairman has said, I don't think that our request is unreasonable at all, Madam President, Madam Vice President, but I don't think he's going to give it to us either. So, I think this deal dies on... After Friday, if the down payment is not made. So, I'm trying to explore what can be done responsibly in order to see how that down payment might be able to be made on Friday, in order to produce the extensions of the due diligence period that we will be able to need. In fact, if we make that down payment, we basically get to go up until closing. Is that right, Jeff, in terms of the time period? Okay.
Which is...
Closing in the purchase-sale agreement, I believe, was initially defined as January 30. I believe it was, and there may have been another outside closing date, but I believe that was the date that was described.
Okay. So, it will definitely give us the extended period we need to complete due diligence and so on. But if we assume, based upon what we know now, without the completion of due diligence, what kind of revenues does that generate for us and the other things that we talked about?
So, Commissioner, we met yesterday, and I promised you I would have that for you today. We are working on that. Holly, in fact, provided me with some numbers right before we came in here. Holly and the Budget Office have been working on that. So, they've done their work. I just haven't done my work yet in reviewing it.
Still need to vet it.
So, I will provide that to the board this afternoon in terms of the numbers we've looked at specifically, where it was... What does, based upon where we are today with transient occupancy tax generating, spinning off of the Millennium as currently operated, what that would look like with a 600-room hotel, with an 800-room hotel, given various levels of occupancy, et cetera? So, I can tell you without batting an eye that it's a significant increase. So, the... This, again, as I said earlier, this opportunity facilitates another opportunity for the board, and that is to generate additional revenues to help facilitate the expansion of convention and visitor infrastructure in the community. So, it is a very real investment with a return at the end. The other thing I'd want to mention as well, as the board considers this, and I'll work with Roger Friedman to confirm this, but... And with the port as well, if the board does go down this route of providing the dollars for the earnest payment, number one, it would likely take the form of a grant payment to the Port Authority that would be assigned to the contract. Secondly, there may be a way to structure this, either as a down payment, Commissioner Portin, as you referred to it, there may also be the ability to take out that contribution through the hotel revenue bond issuance at the end of the day to reimburse the county, but we want to look into that before saying affirmative.
So, let me try to be very, very clear as to where I am on this and to help all of our thinking. I hope it's helpful and doesn't further confuse the matter. Number one, I agree that our due diligence has not been completed to the degree that we need it. And governmental entity due diligence is different from developer due diligence. So, there are certain things we have to do that those in the development world may not necessarily include in their understanding of what has to be done, but we're required to do it because we're public entities. And we still have more of that to do. It's not done today, and it will not be done by Friday. Number two, so therefore, our request for an extension of time, I don't think is unreasonable. Having said that, I've been dealing with ownership of the hotel for a number of years, long enough to know, that I believe I know the people that we're working with. And I know that how unreasonable we may think it to be... And I know that how unreasonable we may think it to be to say, "No, there will be no more extensions of the deadline of when that payment has to be made," that, that when that, those words issued from Chairman Quek, that he meant it and he's not going to extend it. So I do believe that, that that payment is either made Friday or this opportunity to move forward on, on developing a world-class, state-of-the-art hotel where, where we're in charge, because, and if we think that the other words that followed saying, "No, I'm not going to extend it," which were, and I'll continue to operate it as is, I believe that he means that too, which means we're going to continue to get the same product in the foreseeable future that we have today. And that product is inadequate to support, and the numbers bear it out. It's just inadequate to support our convention center and the business that we rightfully should be competing for and claim. And as a consequence, that will all be lost for as long as the eye can see. There's no predicting when we'll ever get a chance like this again. So third, I think that payment, if we want to have this opportunity, and we want to be able to move forward and develop that hotel and expand our convention center as needs to be done, and opening up the opportunities on how to deal with the arena as, as President Dreehouse referenced in her remarks, and so on, that payment has to be made. Whether we make or grant, however you characterize it, coming out of TOT, the entirety of that or a portion of that, I think is some of the work that we need to do between now and Thursday when, when we will meet again and, and act. I like this better when, when the hotel bonds were going to be issued and everything was covered out of private money, and there was no risk to, to any public money at all. But that's not, that's not today. So I'm trying to see how much risk we really have, is why I've asked questions about the numbers that I have. And then I think we're going to be able to quantify whether we can go yard on this, meaning whether we are able with, without undue risk to public dollars to support the whole or to support a portion. And if it, and if it's just a portion, then part of the conversation between now and Thursday also has to be is where, where's the, the balance going to come from. But regardless, that payment is going to have to be made on Friday, or else this opportunity is gone, and we're going to suffer the, the loss of, of business that is at hand for as, as long as anyone can see and, and/or predict. So Madam President, is that sufficiently clear in terms of what, or do, do you have any questions about what I've said?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam President, just a couple of comments. There's no doubt, I think, in any of our minds that revenue, huge amount of revenue will be generated if this deal is done. But as was said earlier, we're required and have the responsibility to perform due diligence, and we didn't ask for a week or two weeks, we asked for 60 days, which means in the administration's mind, and Port Authority also, that there are some serious and cumulative things that need to be found out before we enter into this deal. So I think the 1.3 million that they're asking for, for earnest money, will be a $1.3 million regret on our part if we think there's that many things that we need 60 days to determine how deep we're going to get into this deal. So that's just where I am with it.
Thank you. So Jeff, to be clear then, if we were to put down the earnest money on Friday, it buys us the time to do the due diligence and more, right? And because it, all the way through January is actually more than what we've asked for. And so it gives us, it gives the Port Authority time to review the financial, the legal aspects of this, and we do or do not move forward. The caveat to that is if we do move forward, then, you know, obviously, that's an investment that we can maybe recoup as we go out for these revenue bonds and maybe we, we put that in the stack. The alternative then is that if we just, if the Port Authority and by extension, all the rest of us decide that this is not the way we want to move forward, then what? So the, the 1.3 then, if the Port Authority has then control of the property, which is unlike what we have today, right? Because we don't have control of the property, then that's what we're getting for the earnest money. Is that a fair ac...
I think that's fair at, at this point. And again, we're, we're still doing some assessment on this, but I think one way to look at it is, yes, that this 1.3 million provides you with, with the control over the property that takes you up to closing, gives you the opportunity to close on this property, either for a, the hotel project and Convention Center expansion project as discussed, or for just simply the acquisition of the, of the property if the board were to deem that in its, in its best interest as well, or ultimately through the port, obviously.
Right. So then that, you know, and we do have some revenue that really, I mean, from my perspective, we've kind of been sitting on it, because we've been waiting for something to happen with the Millennium Hotel, and so we have not, as a board, collectively moved forward on these other items because we know that the Headquarter Hotel is the linchpin to all of the other parts, right? So it, I'm really, you know, I, I feel like we, we will need to make a decision by Thursday, but this, to me, is a matter of what's a good investment with the dollars that we've set aside for a specific purpose. And so, and I, you know, I feel like, I'm the only one that's a little in, in the middle here. I feel like the others have been very clear, so I...
Madam President, if I could, just, just to, not to clarify, but to emphasize a, a point that you made, and as I want to also, in so doing, again, point out, the administration did not come to the board today with a recommendation on this. We will have one formally for you by Thursday, after which time I would imagine you will have had a chance to do some more...
Right. Well, that's what I was going to say. So we've got, we've got a couple of days here.
We, we do, but I did want to point out, based upon what you said, that I, for the, especially for those who may be watching at home, that the transient occupancy tax dollars under Ohio law are not capable of being utilized for general fund purposes. So our very next discussion point today is, is the 2020 county budget, and I don't want people to be confused, saying, "Well, if you've stored up money, why aren't you using that to balance your general fund budget?" There is no ability under Ohio law to use transient occupancy tax for general operating purposes of, of the county or even our own building infrastructure.
Right. So it's for the very specific purpose of something related to convention business and hotel business.
Correct.
But to the point, so then on Thursday, we should have something in front of us to give us the option to move forward with the earnest money if we so choose, and that would be a resolution to allow for that to happen. And then if we were to do that, then that rolls into the Friday deadline, and we've bought ourselves additional time at all.
Correct.
Madam President.
Yes.
Two, first of all, thank you for your additional comments. I think you've done a great job in capturing the essence of the variables that are before us, leading up to, now to, to Friday. Where I am is I, I do believe if there's no down payment, the opportunity is lost. If there is a down payment, and lost for as long as the eye can see, if there is a down payment, it's not as if those, those dollars that, as you've correctly framed them, that are invested in, in this opportunity are, are being invested and getting nothing in return. There are a number of things we do get in return for that, including the ability in our engagement with and, and relationship with the port to gain control, complete control over this opportunity and, and the, the use of the property and the site as well. And that's not an insignificant benefit from our investment, just looking at that alone. But the, the third thing that I really wanted to emphasize and make sure is clear, the questions I have raised, I'm fully prepared to invest TOT dollars into this opportunity to make certain that the down payment, that, that we don't lose the opportunity by that payment not being made on Friday. Whether that is $1.3 million that should be used, should come from TOT, or whether TOT should responsibly cover some lesser amount to keep our risk within certain parameters, and, and we need to look to others who are stakeholders in this business and opportunity to come up with the balance of what the, the differential might be at that point. So I'm just picking numbers out of the air. This doesn't mean anything in terms that I've done any analysis, and I haven't received Jeff's numbers to, to come with any conclusion, but, you know, let's say it, it turns out that, that a responsible split is, is 900,000 comes, it could be justified based on the return we would get out of 75% occupancy of 600 rooms, which, by the way, is 450 rooms on average a night, you know, what that might yield. And $400,000 is somebody else's responsibility, and we work also now between now and, and Thursday to try to affect that kind of a result so that our investment is further justifiable because we've limited the risk and, and spread the risk. You know, that's the wor, that's some of the work that I'm saying also needs to be done between now and, and Thursday.
I just do want to clarify on that point, because I did ask Jeff earlier, just for the benefit of everybody else, that this 1.3, I was wondering if we could negotiate that amount down, and the answer to that is no, because it's part of the contract. And so 1.3 is the amount. I, I understand what you're saying, if, if we could bring in some partners, that it would limit the, the risk of the county. So I, I appreciate that perspective as well. Yes.
Madam President, if I could just have some, one clarification. So on the 1.3 million, we give one entity, this, we give it to Jeff, and then the Port Authority...
Oh. I don't know about that, but anyway.
Well, right.
Then he gives it to somebody else.
So then the Port Authority has some extended time to do their due diligence till January, and then the Port Authority decides it's not a good thing for the county to do. So the agreement as it relates to the earnest money and the agreement that we have, it says that we can get that 1.3 million back?
No, the, the 1.3 million is part earnest money, right? So if, if we did not, ultimately, it's tied to the closing on the property. So if we did not close, we would not get it back. If we did close on the property, there, especially if a project comes out of this and we're issuing hotel revenue bonds for the financing of the project, it's very foreseeable that the county would get a return, would get its money back at that point in time funded from the hotel revenue bond.
I understand the hotel revenue bond, but other than that, it would just be in your pocket.
Yep.
And then that's it. I mean, then we figure out how to, not your pocket, but whoever's watching, yeah, right. But I just want to...
It would be, yes, it, it is a, is earnest money that would go from, from the county to the port, from the port to, to the Millennium Copthorn.
Sure. And it's gone.
To facilitate, yes.
It's in a...
In exchange for the control over the property, either through acquisition or...
Well, that's, there's the caveat, though, and I want to dig into this just a little bit because it's to your question. So if, if we do not, we decide against it, the port does the due diligence, they say this isn't a good investment, and we decide against it, the caveat here is that because we have control through the port of the property, if we were to choose to walk away, then we walk away, we lose the 1.3. If we say, you know, this, this is one of the top priorities of the county, we need to invest here, we can then purchase the Millennium, which is something that we contemplated before you got here, actually, about a year and a half ago, and said, you know, this is a high enough priority that we want control of not only the Millennium, but that, that property for whether in its expansion or a different Headquarter Hotel. That would be the other option, to use the T O T dollars for that purpose, to acquire the hotel, and then we have control of the property and the hotel, and then we have a different way forward. But that is kind of the caveat to the question.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And how it might play out.
And Madam President, Madam Vice President, if I may, and I know Roger Friedman is here. Roger's been the lead counsel on this for the county. If I could ask Roger one question as it relates to the earnest dollars in the contract. So I believe this, this tranche of earnest dollars takes the, the purchaser up to closing. There is another earnest dollar towards the end of the period. Is that correct?
Correct.
Would be, would be, it would be after the due, after the port was able to conclude due diligence, et cetera. And I would imagine we'd be a lot closer to determining whether we were moving forward on a project or not. But could you just define that?
That's accurate. It's closer to like 30 days before whatever the closing date is.
Okay.
It's tied to certain notices that the hotel is required to give.
Okay.
And how, how much is that?
It's for the same amount.
Same, 1.3 million.
Yes.
Boy.
But if we chose to not move forward, then we wouldn't do it.
You wouldn't pay that.
No, but we've already paid the 1.3.
The original would be gone, but the...
Yeah. And so, and lastly, it, it really doesn't matter to me where it's coming from, it's still 1.3 million. And so we, okay, so if we lose this or decide not to do it, oh, okay. You, you, okay, that's it.
I know, it's complicated, and it's a hard decision to make. So we're going to have a couple of days here to, to think through it.
Sure.
Jeff, I do think that we need something in front of us, whether or not we choose to move on it is a whole other question.
You'll have it on Thursday.
But have something in front of us on Thursday if we choose to move forward, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Are there any comments or questions in addition to that, or...
Excuse me?
Okay. All right. Thank you. And thank you to the members of the city administration for being here as well and others, from the general public.
Oh, Madam President. Just one other comment I'd like to add. You know, this is the developers' opportunity that we're kind of jumping on board with. You know, so Vanderkar, Robs, Myjunis, those who are involved in that effort, they have helped to get us to this point where we've never been before. And I, you know, I want to thank them, I want to thank the port, everybody involved in, in the city, everybody involved in getting us to this level where we are today, where we have this great opportunity that, that is at hand. And I'll just point out, even though this is not our concern, because Vanderkar pursued this on their own and were able to get this on their own, but, you know, if this whole thing falls apart, you know, they've got a lot of money that they've invested that they have at risk also, and that's not our concern, but it, it isn't like we're the only ones that have something at risk here either, you know, or could have at risk here either. And I just think that, that it bears noting that their willingness to, and they, they need us, so, you know, that's why we're, we're here as well. But they've spent a lot of time and effort and money to get to this point also. So, you know, there's a lot of folks that have skin in the game right now on what I believe will ultimately prove to be, and sometimes, you know, there, there are things that, that, you know, the facts are pointing to what you know is going to be a conclusion, but you're not at that date yet. This might be one of those, and that's why I'm trying to mitigate our risk as much as possible in the manner I've laid this out. But this is one of those things that I truly feel, if Friday goes by, that payment is not made, we will regret that. That's the decision that we'll regret.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for, for the information. The next item is related to our budget, and so we have had multiple conversations related to the budget since the administrator made his recommendation. And so as requested, we've asked some different departments to come in and give us an overview of the impacts of, you know, what the budget looks like from their perspective. One of the things that we contemplated, or we actually did in the last budget cycle was related to 911. And so I just, I want to just frame this quickly and say that we have a very, very good 911 system in the county. As everyone knows, we have two separate systems, one's county, one's city. But by all counts, the 911 system from the county is well-run, it's well-managed, the people are doing a fantastic job. We have highlighted some of that work. But one of the challenges is that it, it's, it's an expensive operation to run, especially if we want to keep quality people in those roles, and so we rely on our local partners to help pay for that. And as we are less able to do our part by way of financing part of the 911 for the communities, we rely on the local partners to do that, but they are also under the same kind of budget strains that we are, related particularly to the state activity. And so we struggled with this in the last budget, and what was the right size of that partnership? And so I just, we're, we're going to revisit... And so I just, we're going to revisit as we always do, because it's something that we always contemplate by way of the budget. But we do have a speaker here today, Fire Chief Robert Leininger is here. And so if you would please come forward and give us your perspective, and I know Andy is here as well to speak to it, but I do want to give you the opportunity to speak since you've filled out the speaker's card.
Thank you.
Yes.
President Dreehouse, Commissioner Portune, Commissioner Dumas, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Robert Leininger, I'm the Fire Chief of Springfield Township. I'm also the President of the Hamilton County Fire Chiefs. I represent 40 fire departments, suburban fire departments. However, Chief Winston from the City of Cincinnati also sits on our executive board. So I do represent a, a lot of fire chiefs here in Hamilton County. I want to speak about the reduction of dispatch fees or the proposed reduction of dispatch fees and the importance of that and the impact on the 40 suburban fire departments in Hamilton County. Normally this time of the year I come down and, in a sense, beg you not to raise our dispatch fees. And I want to stress the importance of the impact of those dispatch fees on our operations. As you know, with the state funding reduction and elimination, we've all been struggling for the last 10 years to try and meet the demands for our service. And it's, it's quite a challenge. The dispatch fees, I can speak for Springfield Township, I pay, my budget is $120,000 for dispatch fees. So every time that that tone goes off and we respond to an emergency, whether it be a fire or an EMS call, we are billed for that dispatch. And that's, takes away funding that I desperately need to hire personnel and to replace antiquated equipment and to stay current with technologies. The biggest challenge today really is just personnel. We rely on part-time personnel a lot to balance that budget, but we're faced with a lot of different challenges. So hearing that you are considering a proposal to reduce the dispatch fees, it's just wonderful to hear that you're even considering that. The impact would be huge across the, the county. I want to reassure you, and I'm speaking on behalf of all the fire chiefs, that we would reinvest that money back into our operations. And that would be, it would give us the ability to hire personnel, to replace antiquated equipment. For example, I'm sure Andy has mentioned to you that we are looking at upgrading our mobile data computers. Right now, those, those computers are 15 years old and we're relying on data radios to get information through our MDCs. It's very antiquated and outdated. The police, on the other hand, they're light years ahead of us because they have the clear levy. And they have funding through county resources that they stay current with technology. But the 40 fire department, the 40 suburban fire departments, we're constantly playing catch-up and we're trying to piecemeal and keep things going. And to hear that this, this might free up some money for us to reinvest back into our operations, to replace MDC hardware and to stay current with technology is just wonderful. I think that the level of customer service, and quite honestly, I mean, to meet the demands of our 911 calls would just be enhanced tremendously. So we talk about the partnership, we talk about the, you know, the impact of the possible reduction in dispatch fees. I can reassure you that we would not waste a dime of that opportunity to get a break from those dispatch fees and gives us an opportunity to reinvest back into our, our operations. You know, one thing I want to stress, the importance, you, you have an opportunity here to find a sustainability source for funding for the Hamilton County Communication Center. And President Dreehouse, I echo you, we have one of the best communication centers in the country. However, I know that Andy struggles just like we do with hiring good people and really retaining good people. They have a high turnover rate and that's a problem. It takes about a year and a year and a half to really get a good dispatcher because our 911 or our emergency operations and our emergency services all start with that phone call. And whoever takes that call, that is the start of the emergency response. And that is such a key person that takes that call, and you want to have the best person available that can be able to triage that emergency and then be able to articulate that and get the process rolling and then ultimately dispatch us. The fire departments, police departments, they're not that important. The communication center, that is the most important link in the emergency response services that we have in Hamilton County. And over the years, I think we've overlooked their importance. They're oftentimes just kind of pushed into the background and we get to respond with our lights and sirens and we get all the attention. But make no mistake, they are the most important service or the most important link in our emergency services that we provide. I mean, the quality cannot be overlooked and his staff does a tremendous job, but they also need our support. They need a continued or a sustainable funding source, they need to have the ability to hire good people and retain them, and they also need to have the ability to stay current with technology. And then we can all benefit from, benefit from that as well. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Available for questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yeah, I do want to put the caveat that the recommended budget does include a .25 increase, so what you're referring to is reflective of that increase, right?
Correct. So the, the budget includes a two, a two-year rollback in the, a rollback in the 911 detail rate over a period of two years. I think it takes it from $16 down to $5 over that, over that two-year period. So yes, but that is, that is part of the, of the budget that is funded through the implementation of a quarter cent sales tax as well. I did want to ask the chief one, one question. You mentioned in Springfield Township, $120,000 in dispatch fees. Is that, is that total, is that fire, is that fire and police?
That's actually, that's just my budget per year for dispatch fees. We have our own police department, their budget is $300,000 in dispatch fees. I know Director Knapp shared some, some numbers with me that over a two-year period, Springfield Township Police and Fire Services could save $380,000 over a two-year period, which then we could take that money and reinvest it back into our operations.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification because typically the, the police and fire dispatch fees are typically talked about separately. I just wanted to make sure that that was just fire.
Correct, and I am here representing the.
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to make it clear that it's, the total in Springfield is closer to half a million.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity today, thank you.
Really appreciate it, yes.
May I ask some questions while Chief Leininger is here before we hear from Andy or would you prefer me to wait for Andy to speak?
No, go ahead.
Chief, thank you very much for, for being here. We've worked on these issues for a long time.
Yes, sir, we have.
Together and, you know, doing everything we can to try to keep.
Yes.
The rates down. The dollars that would go back into the budget of Springfield Township, just for example, as one entity, they would go back into the township's general fund from which then allocations to police and fire. Those decisions would be made by your trustees and administration. Am I, isn't, is that how it works in Springfield?
Well, and, and as a township, we have a little bit more leeway. I mean, I go in with recommendations.
Right.
For where that money should be spent, but yes, sir Todd, that is correct. Unlike a city, I mean, city typically, all that money goes into the general fund and then you're kind of, you know, you decide where it's going to go. But we're levy-driven. So the monies that are voted by our taxpayers to support our levy, that's what funds our operations. So they can't take money out of the fire budget to go buy a snowplow.
Right.
So there are some restrictions, but yes, sir, I think when it comes to dispatch fees.
Here's what, here's why I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not, I'm not at all speaking contrary to your, your discussion here today. As you know, I, I support hand and half for a long time, that every dollar saved to Springfield Township and, and all of the, the 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County, those are dollars that can be reinvested in first responder activities.
Yes, sir.
So it, it really benefits everyone. Just want to make sure that as we do this, that we also not lose sight of the fact that, that all of those 49 jurisdictions or the, the 40 fire districts and.
Yes, sir.
Whatever, as the case may be, that your elected leadership and administrations support all of that money getting reinvested back in as well.
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, absolutely.
So you've got, you know, there, there, it's complicated, as many people have said, but there are a lot of pieces to this.
Yes, sir.
So we want to not lose sight on that. Second, the amount of money, you know, the way the budget is recommended is based on what we have today. So I'm just going to throw some other ideas out, that, that sales tax dependence is not the only thing that we're fighting for here, and I don't think you disagree with this either. Number one, we need our state legislature to act responsibly around what fuels 911 communication spending. The whole issue of sales or cellphone bills and a little surcharge on cellphone users needs to continue to be pursued because what's driven a lot of, of the cost to Springfield and others is, is the fact that our communication center has to respond to every call that comes in. And whereas 30 years ago, you might have an accident on the interstate and you'd get two calls when people were able to get off the interstate and get to a phone booth or something and, and make the call. Today, you'll have 100 calls from people who just drove by on their cellphones calling, and they have to answer every single one because you never know what that caller is going to say. And so, you know, that's something where again, voters need to know, citizens, taxpayers need to know that, that one of the reasons we're, we're considering, how do we raise local revenues is because the state legislature has yet to adopt a very simple solution to the funding of communication centers statewide and ours as well, and they continue to fail to do that. So we've all got to be united around that as well. And as we balance our budget, we're looking to other sources of revenue too, and so all of that fits in and plays in with respect to that. Third, you mentioned a couple of times where you really need to invest in is the local MDTs. You bet you do. The clear levy only supports police. I don't know if that was, I honestly don't remember when that was first adopted, whether that was a conscious decision to limit its coverage, whether fire asked to be a part of it and they were, were decided not to be a part, you know, how that came about, but the clear levy is what it is today. And I, I would venture to say that if the general public realized that fire vehicles were not capable of keeping pace with the, the mobile data terminals that, that the police first responders have, that they would want to make sure that, that fire is taken care of just the same way. So you know, you and I have talked about this in the past as well in terms of how can we open that clear levy up to, to free a few dollars? I don't want to pit fire against police, that's not what I'm saying at all. But that is a local source of funding where I'm going to continue to ask for people to work together, police and fire and local jurisdictions and county leadership and Andy and everybody to see, is there a bankable solution to, to that? And you know, what I've heard is, well, you can't do anything about it because it's in the ballot language and we otherwise would. If, if it's that, maybe we need to try to put something on the ballot to clarify language that would allow fire to, to access funds as well out of that levy, provided there's support for it and consensus for it amongst all your first responders. But that's, that's also something else that I, I would encourage us all to work on together in terms of trying to find additional revenues to support your efforts directly as it relates to the cost and cost sharing of what it takes for county communications to be fully funded and, and so on. So you know, it's, it's, there are a lot of features to this.
Yes, sir.
But we're, we, we understand what you're saying. We're all working as many different ways as we can to lower those, those dispatch fees because we know, we know that it's all going to go directly into boots on the ground or, or necessary equipment investments that are going to make you better equipped and efficient and responsive to your needs with respect to communications and it's going to help our, our comm center as well.
Yeah, thank you. And we always appreciate your support. We've appreciated the support of this board over the years. I know it's a difficult thing and you have to look me in the face and say, we're going to raise your dispatch fees again, kind of thing. But, but I, you know, I didn't really have an opportunity to thank you. Last year, when we first went into this thing, you were looking at a $5 rate increase on our dispatch fees. That would have been devastating to the fire departments as well as the police in Hamilton County. But through your collaboration and working together and, you know, you, you only raised it a dollar and we were able to, to make that work. But still, and I didn't have an opportunity to really thank you for doing that. That was, that was a, a big thing for us and we were able to, to, you know, work through it. But I'm a member of the Ohio Fire.
As you do that, you know, we thank as well the, the local Board of Realtors and, and their leadership. You know, I, I look at Mark Querry, for example, Silverton Councilmember, but also the primary governmental liaison between the Cincinnati Area Board of Realtors and, and us. And, and their consent to that increase of the transfer tax went a long way in helping to pave the way for us to act the way we did as well. So there's a lot of teammates you got out there on these issues.
A lot of moving parts, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, we, we appreciate that support, we really do. I'm a member of the Ohio Fire Chiefs and we are continuing to lobby our state legislators to find an alternative funding source through the, the cellphone taxes and so on to try and help with the community, offset some of those communication costs as well. So we're, and, and we have a great relationship with the Hamilton County Police Association and we continue to work together cooperatively through a good partnership and promote that collaboration to find perhaps an op, an opportunity to, to do some joint funding because we're all in this thing together. So it's so important to do that.
Yeah.
But again, I want to, on behalf of all the 40 fire chiefs in Hamilton County, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chief.
We really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Cellphone user fee, chief, not, not tax.
Did I say tax? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and Andy Knapp is coming forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks again, Chief Leininger, for your kind words and for the commissioners, the kind words about our center. We're very proud of our center. As you know, I try to relay that to you every chance that I get, that the men and women that work there 24 hours a day, seven days a week are incredibly talented and dedicated and, and proud of the work that they do. And I think that it stands to reason that the, the quality of life in entity community really starts with who are the first people that you have in touch with, your, your public safety forces, and that's our, our 911 dispatch staff, that in, in the residents' worst days, that they know that when they call somewhere that the phone is going to be answered, it's going to be competently handled. Any type of aid that we could administer as quickly as possible prior to arrival of our, of our first responders will be done, and it'll be done in an expeditious manner in a way that you would expect it to do. And, and that is an expensive task that we're faced with. The, the cost of the technology that we have, it's high-end technology, it turns over very fast. I think you're all familiar with the computers that you deal with in your own homes and, and recognize how quickly that as soon as you open the box and take it off the shelf, it's, it's already, it's aged in some way, shape or form, and we're no different in that, or accept that I should say, that the technology is so rapidly advancing and then the public's expectations of, of what they expect us to be able to handle and how we need to be able to find them using various methods, that, that is a consistent challenge that we in the 911 industry are faced with, along with the continuing education requirements for our operators, the long hours, the, the shift work, and, and I could go on and on. But nonetheless, the, the current recommended budget as it, as it stands now with that rate reduction is sorely needed. And it's needed because a lot of our responders are trying to find ways around our system. We, we had a consultant study done that dove into our efficiency of our communication centers relates to other industry type of operations, and it showed that we are operating in an efficient manner. However, the user fee is a disincentive to the shared services model. And the reason for that is if, if I have a way of, of artificially impacting the amount of money that I pay, then. of money that I pay, then it's truly not a shared service. So what we've seen since 2008, the statistics that I have, is that the use of our center is, by law enforcement specifically, is being artificially impacted because they've developed non-emergency numbers where they can offload the emergency traffic, whereas Fire EMS really can't offload that traffic. Fire EMS, every, every incident they respond to is, is generally an emergency type of response, whereas in the police world, you have some non-emergency things that are, are offloaded to their clerical positions, which in, in turn then is kind of almost a vicious circle that I'm in, that, that then the revenue decreases, so the cost has to, to the users has to go up, and it's, it's a vicious circle. This particular initiative, however, that the county administrators laid out for you is something that is a welcome relief. It is something that will go a long way towards assisting our consumers, our users, into fully utilizing the services that we have. Because to be quite honest with you, I have to have that technology regardless of they use it, as crazy as that sounds, or to what extent they use it, I guess is probably a better way to say that, that I have to have the best and the, and the greatest in order to, to meet the service expectations for those high-end emergencies. And, and when you artificially affect that, which essentially is what the user fee does, it, it, it just creates that, essentially residents can be paying for that service twice. They're paying for it at the local level, and they're paying for it again at the, at the, at the county level. So I, I appreciate the, the investment and the, and the opportunity to speak to you and be happy to answer any questions about my budget or where we're at at the communication center or usage, et cetera.
Well, I just have one question of the Administrator. Thank you for being here. And just to give a little bit of more of an overview, so in the last budget cycle, because we didn't have any revenue increases, we had to look to not only do reductions by way of $20 million, but also increases in revenue by the tune of $8 million, and this was part of that. So just for, for those that are watching that might not be clear on this point, we, we still had to increase the charge to the local departments, but it was less than what we were, we had, had recommended to us to begin with. But so the question is, were it not to be for the increase in revenue here at the .25, have you run any analysis on the impact to 911 and this partnership if we were to not have that .25 increase? I don't know if you guys have run those kinds of analyses, if this were to not-
So if we were, if we were, so essentially what, how much of the, the .25 goes to support the rollback of the-
Yeah, or, or in reverse, if we were to, like last year, you know, we, we did not have the increase in revenue, instead we had to increase this 911 fee on the local communities. If we were to not have an increase this time, my que, I know it's all built into the budget, and so there is no increased charge to the local communities, and in fact, it's the reverse. But what would be an impact, and I don't need it now, but I think it would be interesting to know, the kind of the reverse argument, if, if this weren't built in the budget, what would the impact be to the 911 to the local communities?
So roughly speaking, the, the rollback, again, and we phased it in over two years, but let's just take the total amount of $11, $11 and assuming somewhere around $285,000 details annually, I know it fluctuates, but you're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million. So of the quarter cent sales tax recommended, $3 million of that capacity ultimately goes to support the rollback of, of the, the detail rate by the, that $11 figure. So I don't know if that gives you what-
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Comment? Madam President?
Yeah.
Just very quick. Andy, everything you've said is correct. And I'm just going to tell you, at 8:30 in the morning on April 12th of this year, I placed a call to 911, and I knew that it would be answered, and I knew that the information that I was imparting would be properly deciphered and the dispatch would be put out. And, and I felt a palpable sense of relief, notwithstanding everything else that was happening to me and around me, that, that aspect of everything was well taken care of. So first of all, my thanks to you and your department. I don't think I've ever gotten the name of who that dispatcher was, but-
I'm sure we can find that.
If we can find that, let's-
Absolutely.
Let's do, and I want to personally extend thanks there too. But in the broader sense, the sense of security and comfort that I felt when I placed, you know, that call and thereafter, we, we can't allow our county to regress ever to the point where we were when we didn't have this service available, and that the people in the county all across the board were unable to know when they placed those calls, that they would be answered in a timely manner and information deciphered in a timely manner and dispatches made in a timely manner so that once those dispatches were made, first responders could get there within acceptable periods of, of time. And I suspect probably everyone in Hamilton County had, either has placed a 911 call or knows of those close and dear to them who have. And this is a service that doesn't generate any revenues, you know, for us to do other things, but it is a service that we dare not allow to fall into any lesser of a level and in fact must continue to progress to even greater levels of service and capacity than we have today.
And I thank you for that. There's 22,000 of those phone calls happen every month. And so, so it is incredibly important for us to, to take care of that. And I sincerely appreciate your support that you've always shown to us and in the entire commission. I appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks for being here. We also have Ralph Linney here, who is the head of facilities. Ralph always sits in the back of the room. I don't know why. I don't know what that's about, Ralph, but thank you for being here.
I also sit in the back of the church, too.
Oh, there you go.
Probably did when you were in school also, is my guess, right, Ralph?
Oh, yes. Yes. Until I got in trouble, got the front seat.
There you go.
So, the reason I'm here is to talk a little bit about the budget. The operating budget, we are doing very well with the funds we have. The increases that we have in our budget will pretty well cover the cost for increase in labor, our contracts, our utilities, et cetera, et cetera. The big place that we're struggling is in deferred maintenance, capital maintenance. When I first came here about, and Todd, me and Todd came about the same time, there was about $3 to $5 million that was in the general fund to take care of capital needs, and then we would discuss that with the county administrator and the Board of County Commissioners, and fund necessary capital projects, such as roof replacement, facade repair, tuck pointing, et cetera, et cetera, out of that funds. As the years went by, the situation occurred with the state reducing the funding, et cetera, et cetera, that we went down to a point that we were getting no dollars, zero, in the fund. Last couple of years, we came back to the commission, project by project, working with John Brugan and Lisa Webb, as to things that had to be done, either repairs or replacement. About seven or eight years ago, my staff and I put together a 20-year capital budget, taking a look down the road because now things were being deferred. We just updated it a couple of months ago, and presently, for the next 20 years, and this is just building-related, I'm talking roofs, facades, building systems, this does not include furniture, carpet, security upgrades, anything like that, I'm looking at about $472 million in the next 20 years. If we broke that down for the next 10 years, I'm looking at $257 million, and this has been escalated for cost of money going up. In the next five years, $156 million. My staff and I took a look, Bert Watts, who's in charge of basically Assistant Director of Capital Projects, and Tony Montre, my Assistant Director of Facilities, we took a look at if we took the top three projects that we need in each building we felt most important, or needed right now, which would be anywhere from this year to 2022, it comes out to be $82 million that we need to be bonded right now. The breakdown is very interesting. The sofa, the facade and masonry repairs is approximately $30 million. Elevator replacements is approximately $15 million. You heard about last week the problem we got at the Justice Center. You know the problems we have in this building with the elevators, problems that Mora couldn't get to the seventh floor over at the JFS. That building needs theirs replaced. Window replacements, $20 million. The windows at the courthouse is 100 years old, as an example, and they do need to be replaced. The challenge there is they're historical windows with the historical society, so they have to replace like for like, even though they would be more energy efficient and, and would meet high standards today. HVAC replacements, which would be air handlers and chillers, we need approximately $7 million for those. If they go down, the buildings will be shut down, there is, with the situations we have. Roof replacements, there has not been a major roof replaced since I've been here. Most of them are over 20 years old. We're looking at approximately $6 million. One of the biggest ones is the roofs at the Justice Center. Fire alarm system replacements, they are becoming obsolete. One by one, we're replacing, we replaced them at the old Coroner's Facility a couple of years ago. About two years ago, we did at the John and Family Services. Right now, we're finishing the one in the courthouse. We need to do more in the other buildings, including this one. We're looking at, and at youth detention center has to be replaced. That's $3 million. Then I got about another million dollars of backup generator, electrical upgrades that's needed at the 911 center due to the increase in usage of electricity up there. The system needs to be updated. That's about $200,000. Fire alarm suppression system now will have to be replaced to meet code. So overall, I'm looking at $82 million.
What was the elevator number, Ralph?
Elevator replacement is 14.7.
14.7. Thank you, sir.
So that's where we're at, and whatever we delay, when you do a 20-year plan next year, everything I need in 21 years from now now increases that number. The number does not stay where it's at. It continues to increase as we delay, taking care of the building envelope, the building structure, the building systems, including, you know, the plumbing, electrical, et cetera, et cetera. We have a couple of buildings over 100 years old. We have no building that's really less than 30 years old. In the case of renovations such as this one or the William Hart Taff Law Center, 800 Broadway is close to 88 or 87 years old, and that's the one that we have a big facade problem that has to be addressed.
Mm-hmm.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I ask you just one other question? At the, at the courthouse, Ralph, you mentioned windows replacement, 100 years old. Are you referring to like the, the whole framing structure or the glass or both? Surely the glass in those windows is not 100 years old, or is it?
Some, some of the glasses are, yes.
Is it really?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay.
So yes, I'm talking the frame, the, the glass, all the mechanisms that's involved.
Okay. And does historic preservation mean you can only buy a certain kind of glass?
The glass is not the problem. It's the manufacturer of the frame to make it to be duplicate. Yeah, we looked at this several, about 10 years ago when we did the energy study, and the cost was too, we could not get enough return on the energy savings to pay for the replacement of the windows back then. So we know roughly what it's going to cost, and we have dealt with the historical society as to what we can or can't do. Every window will have to be custom-made.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Thanks, Ralph.
Questions are coming.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you so much.
Could you provide us with that list that you just rattled off? You've got it.
Yes, I will.
All right, let's, let's have Jackie make some copies of that so that we all have it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ralph. Thank you for being here. Yes.
If I could just briefly tack on to what Ralph said, and first of all, I want to thank Ralph and his staff. There's, there's not many that do more with less as well as, that do as well with more, with less resources than Ralph does, if that made any sense. So I want to thank him and his staff. They do a fantastic job and his, Ralph, I don't even know where your staff was when, when I first got into the administration in '06, where you were from a staffing perspective. Where are you right now in terms of staffing levels?
We're at, I think, 74th.
74th. You were roughly around 100 or so?
We're approximately 123.
Okay. All right. So the continual reduction of staff, but more, more to the point, you know, every organization, every large organization has a large amount of deferred maintenance. It's not abnormal to see, but I think what has become critical in this organization is the amount of deferred maintenance we have and in the areas and levels that we have it. We're not talking deferred maintenance, and Ralph does a great job of stratifying all the maintenance categories by life, safety, business continuation, health and safety, et cetera. And we have, you know, the, the amount of deferred maintenance that is, and Ralph kind of painted this well, in the areas of things that would constitute business continuation, things like carpet, office furniture, repair of walls and things like that, that's, you know, most of that's not even in the numbers that, that, the, of the, of all the critical projects that you laid out in terms of elevators, roofs, HVAC systems, et cetera. So that 80, what was the number, 82 million, Ralph, that you said?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't include?
No. None of the, none of the nice stuff that's in the buildings.
Right.
As poor ways say.
So, yeah, if we, if we were to the point where that $82 million number included half of it being nice-to-have type stuff, that's one thing, but that's not where we are. So that's why in the budget, again, we really pressed for this in terms of, of addressing the infrastructure challenge that we face. So the, the budget that I recommended to the board really has three primary themes. It's public safety, it's infrastructure, and it's community partnerships. And this, this infrastructure component, the, our building infrastructure being a key element of it. When we have pieces, Ralph, Ralph mentioned facade, and people think, oh, well, facade, so you just got to go up and paint the, paint the brick or tuck point it, put some new mortar. When we actually have pieces of that facade falling off of the building, it's a problem. And we've had that happen now in, in two different buildings, I think, Ralph, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so trying to make a concerted dent, if you will, in, in addressing our capital infrastructure is a key component of the budget, and I just appreciate Ralph for all of his hard work and diligence and keeping track of the highest priority items.
Madam President?
Yes.
Ralph had, you thought about moving out of any of the buildings into another building versus selling a building, maybe selling one of our buildings and moving somewhere elsewhere? Because I'm looking at these numbers, it's like, where are we going to get this money from to do what is a necessity, basically, but-
It varies depending on, on the type of building. A good, a good example would be, we, many years ago, I think it was about 12 years ago, we tried to pass a sales tax to bill a new jail.
About three years ago, Ralph.
Yeah. And you cannot move, you, you cannot renovate another building. You have to build a new jail from scratch. Same thing with 2020. We have looked at the costs of maybe one of the buildings billing another one for it. The cost is over 90 to 100 million dollars that would have to be found in order to, plus then you have-
Sure, absolutely.
Plus then you got to sell the other building. Dual diligent comes with that. But yeah, some, Jeff and I have, and Holly has looked at some options, and so when Judy was here, the same way, none of them has come together as being desirable. There was a time the county did look at moving up to Mount Airy, the old hospital up there, and we went through our dual diligence, and when everything was said and done, the cost was too high for the renovation that was required, as well as the needs of the coroner. So, you know, we're building a new facility for the coroner because the one we have now is, as you know, a third of size, what it needs, and I didn't include any capital dollars I needed for that building. That was going to be large if we had kept it.
I will say, and it's a great question, it's something we've, we've talked a lot about over the past decade. It's a little bit of a, golden handcuff is not the right term, but it's a, Ralph and his crew does such a good job at managing these buildings at a level that is typically below BOMA standards. So he's, from an operational perspective, we're operating the, the building so cheaply right now, and I say that complimentary, that when you then turn around and look at, okay, if we were to move- you then turn around and look at, okay, if we were to move out of a building and even renovate and lease another building, the costs associated with the capital build out of that, plus the operating costs associated with that, we have not found a situation yet that makes sense for us to do. But we do continue to look at it. We chartered Ralph, I guess it was beginning of this year or late last year, with refreshing our facility master plan and looking at other opportunities for defragmentation and moving buildings. The budget that I put before the board for 2020 includes a number capable of either addressing the current facilities from a capital perspective or looking strategically at some consolidations and moves if we had to do that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, is there anyone else here to speak to the budget?
No one else for the budget. So we have a public hearing starting next week. I know that, I think on the 3rd, October 3rd, is that next week or two weeks?
October 3rd is at 6:30 at the Sharonville Convention Center, and then again, October 8th at 6:30 in Silverton.
And I know that I've had, we've had other depart, because we did reach out to offices and departments asking for folks who wanted to come forward. We did get some response on that. We do have departments that said, I won't be able to make it to a staff meeting, but I would like to come to a public hearing, et cetera. So there'll be more departmental feedback coming in the course of the public hearings.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Our next item is Green Township Zoning Case 2002-06, request for reconsideration. Well, you're not James Nois.
No.
[laughing]
Good afternoon. Brian Snyder, Hamilton County Planning and Development. This is a zoning request for a reconsideration. I'm not sure, I know, Christian Porteen, you've been involved in these before. Reconsideration is not a process that's laid out in our zoning resolution. When you have a county commissioner resolution of approval, such as you do for a double O planned office district, like the zoning of the property in this request, you have a county commissioner resolution, and the only people that can change that is the county commission. Those conditions are required to be enforced and followed unless changed by this commission. One of the ways to do that is by going through the zone change process again. Even though you wouldn't be changing the zoning in this case, you would be asking for a major revision to the zone case, and it would go back through the four to six-month zoning process. The other way is not laid out by state law, but it has been litigated and found to be legal, is through the reconsideration process. This board can reconsider any resolution that they have. As it relates to zoning, you are allowed to reconsider resolutions that do not increase the intensity or density of a development. In this case, there was a condition that allowed for one freestanding sign for this office development on Race Road in Green Township. They have one sign. Since that approval, they have split the property into two separate lots. And there's one building on one lot that has the sign and it's on Race Road. There are two office warehouse buildings in the rear of the property that do not have signage. And when they sold the property, they didn't work out any agreements for shared signage, so they just don't have a sign. You've got, I believe, in the packet that we sent down, a letter from the applicant stating that the deliveries are having a hard time finding them, the customers can't find their building. And so they are requesting a second sign. One of the conditions of the resolution allowed for one freestanding sign. So to add a second one would require changing that condition. Again, that could go through the full four to six-month zoning process with hearings before the planning commission, the zoning commission, and back before this commission. Or you could agree to reconsider it, and we'll set a public hearing for the reconsideration of that resolution and of that condition specifically. Staff has no issue with that. Like I said, the process is something that we followed before. The commission has done in several cases previously to on zoning cases such as this. The township is in favor of the change to the condition. So if you authorize us to set the public hearing, that's what we will do. We'll work with clerk on setting a date and sending out all the required notices and then present this formally at a public hearing in the future.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, I was a member of the board that approved this. And, believe it or not, it was in my first term as a county commissioner, 2002. Familiar very much, because I live out this way as well, with the physical conditions of the area and its use. We're talking about a stretch of Race Road that runs between Harrison Avenue and Bridgetown Road. There's been a lot of commercial improvements and some roadway changes, signage, lane additions to this end of that strip between Harrison and Bridgetown Road on Race during that timeframe. We're talking about an area that's just to the north of, can't remember the name of the church, but there's a church, and just to the south of Bridgetown Middle School, where I took my kids, dropped them off after school practices, you name it, for three years when they were in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So I've got a lot of familiarity, and that was after, significantly after, we passed this resolution. So very knowledgeable about the area. And what has happened, especially with the increased commercial use of Race Road at that end of that portion of Race, is you have commercial vehicles that are missing the right drive, the correct driveway to get back to the warehouses, as Mr. Snyder has indicated, that there are warehouses back there. Instead, they're turning into the driveway of the middle school. And so you have these commercial vehicles that are now in a driveway of a middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. You know, you've got a lot of traffic during the day, especially morning drop-offs, afternoon pickups, kids walking home from school, et cetera. Really don't want a lot of commercial trucks that are missing the correct entrance to get to where they need to go. So I speak to all of that for the purpose of trying to lay the groundwork for suggesting that, I believe, as a member of the county commission in 2002 that voted favorably upon the first resolution that included the signage condition, that is the subject matter of reconsideration if we act that way today. To say that I believe that there has been sufficient change, increase in commercial traffic, potential for motorist and pedestrian injury, to suggest that reconsideration of that specific condition is appropriate because that change will favorably impact the source of the danger, which is your commercial traffic that is not properly slowing down and/or identifying the correct curb cut and driveway that they need to turn on to that will otherwise impact the school, the middle school, its students and staff, as well as the church, although the primary activity of the church tends to occur at hours and/or on days where you have less of a conflict of this commercial traffic and pedestrians. But nonetheless, I believe there's sufficient change in circumstance to warrant reconsidering this condition. And if warranted, I would be happy to move reconsideration.
We don't need a vote on the reconsideration. Just an agreement of the board is sufficient.
Okay. And I speak in favor of reconsideration.
Thank you.
Madam President, I also am in favor of reconsideration, which will lead to a public hearing.
What would be the timing of the public hearing?
Probably October the 24th. I believe that's the next meeting that we could make notice for. We do have another zoning hearing on that, a public hearing on that agenda. So we'll probably ship for that.
We have that engine side.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll work with the clerk on the next available day. We'll make it as fast as we can.
Okay. That's fine. Let's go ahead and move forward in that way.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. What's left on the agenda are two executive sessions. So I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney concerning pending litigation, and an executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property at competitive bidding, or the sale of other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you.